Okay.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening all, thank you for attending tonight's town council meeting on Zoom. For last weekend's announcement, I'd like to remind everyone that Much Wenlok Mutual Aid is running and ready to help anyone in need and contact details can be found via ourself or their website and their Facebook page. Please don't be afraid to remind people that it's there and willing to help out if anyone needs it. Just quick to note that the High Sheriff's visit has of course been cancelled and won't be taking place tomorrow. I believe I've spoken to all of you and informed you, but just in case. The plan currently would be to rearrange in January, so as soon as that's becoming more concrete, I will be in touch. And of course, as the Reverend Matthew said, it's coming up Remembrance Weekend and I hope you've all had the opportunity to see the church lit up by the town council so people can come and make a safe and secure way of remembering what they went through, lest we forget. The poppy appeal was ably stalled and, sorry, the stall was ably manned by a group of volunteers. I had the pleasure of me and my wife supporting, as did other councillors and of course members of the public, which was enjoyable but important. I was proud to serve on the stall and raise money, important money for the British Legion. And with that, that's pretty much it, it's been quite a quiet month. So in that regard, I'd like to move on. Town clerk, do we have any apologies?
Yes, we have an apology from councillor Harper who has been unable to join us because he can't come into the office, which he usually does to share the screen with me due to the current restrictions, so he won't be able to attend the meeting.
So, technical reasons.
Yes, yeah.
I propose that we accept this as approved absence.
Yeah.
Excellent, seconded.
Yeah.
All those in favour, thank you very much. Disclosure of pecuniary interests, do I have, do we have any pecuniary interests, could they mention it now please?
Yeah, chairman, I've got a very small pecuniary interest, item 14. I do have a very small pension from Shropshire Council. I was only there four years, so I'm not getting much, but I think I ought to declare it, I think it's item 14.
Yes. Yes, except, yeah, you're right, absolute Shropshire Council Pension Fund. Thanks, thanks for that. Any others, if not, we'll move on to dispensations. Town clerk, have we had any?
None requested.
Thank you. And then item five, Shropshire Council report, to receive a verbal report from our Shropshire councillor David Turner on matters on Much Wenlok.
Good evening, everyone. On the local plan review, the next stage of the review, which includes proposals for Much Wenlok, was due to be considered by Shropshire Council's Cabinet on the 23rd of October, 23rd of November, when it would be expected that the updated draft plan would go to Regulation 19 consultation as to its soundness. However, that meeting has been delayed until the 7th of December. I can only assume that the volume of responses and the issues that have been raised have necessitated more officer time than had been anticipated. In terms of the builders' planning applications of interest to Much Wenlok residents will be that the builders' planning applications, which are due to be considered at the Southern Planning Committee's December meeting, given the volume of work required to ensure that the planning officers' recommendations take full account of all the issues and bearing in mind that a few areas have not yet been settled, including ecology, Shropshire Council's highways and highways England, I would be pleasantly surprised if it hits the deadline. The town council may wish to consider whether it wishes to make representations at the meeting and prepare for it in due course, possibly in conjunction with other local councils. On pavement parking, on Monday, I posed a formal question to Shropshire Council's Cabinet about its response to the consultation on the Department for Transport's pavement parking consultation. One of the options is for national standards, which don't currently exist, I don't believe, and civil enforcement. There is concern not only about the danger posed to pedestrians having to step into the road to avoid parked cars and the danger for wheelchair and pushchair users, but also the damage caused to footways by the weight of vehicles. I mentioned the unintended consequences of enforcement, including the potential blocking of narrow streets in towns such as Much Wenlok and others in my division outside the parish, to the extent that emergency services might have difficulty in negotiating a route to an incident. On Covid-19, members of Shropshire Council's community reassurance team formed about eight months ago were in Bridge North and Much Wenlok yesterday, providing advice to retailers and cafes. Throughout this period, they've provided support and advice to community groups such as Much Wenlok Mutual Aid, as they in turn support those who are needed or isolated. Finally, chairman, my advice surgery, I plan to hold one on Saturday the 14th of November at Much Wenlok Museum. As a result of the current guidelines, however, have now cancelled this. Of course, if anyone has a problem that they think I can help with, they can contact me at any time by telephone or by email.
Great, thank you very much councillor Turner. Do we have any questions for councillor Turner, councillors? Okay, so thank you very much for your report and move on to item six, public session. We've had two requests to speak. Mr Arthur Hill, could we go to you first please? You're muted currently.
Can you hear me now, chairman?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Chairman, it was about the Shington Street and Wilmore Street. I was not particularly impressed by the actions of the council last month where they decided to put the whole thing to a committee or of councillors and outside people, simply because I think it's just brushing the problem further down the road. Can I just remind you of my main concerns and concerns of many residents around here is that Shinton Street is becoming a thoroughfare for all the through traffic towards Broseley and on school days from about quarter past eight in the morning till quarter past nine and from about three o'clock to about 3:40, there is all hell let loose on Shinton Street. It's because there's people taking their kids back home and you look in the cars and they, they're all full of schoolchildren, you know, this is the Broseley way through, avoiding the Gaskell corner, so they come through the middle of Wenlok. The other thing is that because of the parking on the one side of Shinton Street, and I'm one of the worst culprits, I suppose, because if I don't park on the road, so they can't get my car out on the road, someone else parks there, so that's a problem I need to face. But they then go, because they can't pass and there's vehicles coming up and down, they go on the pavement and there's children walking down, there's mothers with prams etcetera, trying to go the other way from the primary school back up. And it is very dangerous there. And, you know, the other incident last week, or within last fortnight anyway, where that forage harvester went up the Wilmore Street, through Shinton Street, up Wilmore Street and out towards Broseley, 11 and a half tonne machine mounting both curbs going past the Guildhall, even the pigeons disappeared on that morning. I just find that horrendous. I have to say, Caulfield's themselves were not involved. This was a customer trying to make his way to Caulfield's by a stupid route and also he was a bloody good driver, to be perfectly honest, how he managed that, I don't know. But, you know, we need to stop this and also the fact that there's people going, riding, driving cars up the high street, some of them know damn well it's the one.
Sorry, you've exceeded the free minutes.
Right, okay, right, well, that's all I wanted to say really, but I think it is so important that it's dealt with sooner rather than later than kicking it into touch.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Are you okay to take any questions from councillors if we have any?
Yes, I'm not highly qualified, but I will do.
Councillors, any questions or comments for Mr Hill at all? Councillor Jenkins?
I would like to agree with all that Mr Hill has said and it goes on from what has been discussed before. We need to address the problems that we have in the centre of the town, which will impact on the problems at Gaskell Corner. But until we, until we stop people using Shinton Street and Barrow Street as a rat run and make the Gaskell Corner even worse than it is, then we haven't got a leg to stand on. So I would agree that we need, a width restriction would be good. Certainly in central London, where I'm used to working all the time, they have width restrictions, six foot six or even seven, seven foot, with the ability for emergency vehicles to force their way through by breaking plastic signs. So it's not going to get better, Gaskell Corner's not going to get better, but I think I agree with what has been said, we must do something positive. Amen.
Thank you councillor Jenkins, I think as we, as you write, we, I see it as a concern and we are worried about the situation, but we are nervous without the evidence of where the people could go if they can't go through there. Thank you very much. Mr Paul Hanafin, you've also liked to speak.
Thank you very much. I just, it's in connection with the recent activities down Shinton Street. The authority with responsibility for the roads in Much Wenlok is Shropshire Council. Authority with responsibility for the enforcement of traffic regulations and traffic law is the police, is the police who need to deal with drivers who use the pavement and put pedestrians in danger. It's not the responsibility of the town council to enforce traffic regulations. At the town council meeting last month, an agenda proposal to, to ask Shropshire Council to try a one-way system for the town centre and/or the closure of Wilmore Street to vehicles was defeated unanimously, I think, in favour of setting up a transport working group for the town. The group will seek the views of as many Wenlok organisations and residents as possible to find out what transport issues really concern the people of the town. We want to know what everybody thinks, not just individuals. With the assistance of the town clerk and Zoom, of course, the transport group will have its first meeting next week. A list of potential action points has been circulated and when we've agreed on these, the consultation process can begin. As I mentioned last month, I believe that this is the best way forward, being inclusive of the many, not the few, and is in accordance with the votes and the views of the members from the October meeting. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much, Mr Hanafin. Any comments or questions for Mr Hanafin at all, councillors? Councillor Jenkins?
Quite a bit boring, at some stage in the near future, I should be resigning from the council because I'm going to move and I think the vacancy should be filled by Mr Hanafin.
Well, I'm sure Mr Hanafin is, it would be flattered, of course, it will go down to a vote, but I'm sure we can always look at co-option or something if, if their seats aren't taken. But councillor Jenkins, I hope very much that you'll be able to see out the term until the May's elections, but, and I'm sorry to hear that at some stage you will be moving, be, you will be missed. Any other comments or questions, obviously we're considering this again in the agenda item, our gender item 10, so if not, I'll be happy to move on and we'll be looking at the minutes. Oh, town clerk?
Yeah, excuse me, chair, would it be all right to switch off the video of the members of the public, just to make it easier, or members of the public, just to make it easier for you to see councillors and to?
Yes. I haven't particularly got a preference either way, but it does make it slightly easier to chair and keep track of votes and sometimes councillors are a bit shy putting their hands up, so. In that regard, members of the public, can I ask you to switch off your videos, please, in regards, and also with safeguarding, we've been told that you're looking into people's homes and things like that, so I'm sure not that many of you are above it, but for that safeguarding issue, it's something that we need to raise as well. Thank you very much. Item 7A, to approve and adopt the minutes of a town council meeting held on the 8th of October 2020. I believe there is one error showing that councillor Bert Harper was in attendance, but he's not on the list of attendees. Excellent. Has anybody got any other things they'd like to raise or comments on those minutes? In that case, I'd like to propose that they are a true and accurate record and I'd seek a second for that motion. Councillor Walters, all those in favour? Motion carried. Item 7B, to adopt the minutes of the planning and environmental committee meeting held on the 1st of September 2020. Can I, obviously I didn't attend this one, but please let me know if there are any inaccuracies or anything in this minute.
No, all right.
In that case, could I have a proposal to accept these as a true and accurate record? Thank you councillor Hill, seconded by councillor Jenkins. All those in favour? Motion carried. Item 7C, to adopt the minutes of the finance asset management and HR committee held on the 29th of September 2020. Anybody have any comments or any seen any inaccuracies in these minutes at all?
Propose.
Thank you. Can I have a second please? Excellent, and all those in favour, motion carried. Thank you very much. Item eight, town clerk's report. Obviously councillors have had the report emailed out, pleased to see, it used to be quite busy and a lot of those matters have been sorted, so in that regards, my thanks to the town clerk. Does anybody have any questions or anything for the town clerk at all? And that is, yes, sorry, councillor.
At the section of other matters, it talks about the short ceremony, ceremony at the cemetery with children from the primary school. Obviously that too has, it will not go ahead on the 11th.
Nah, I'd never, the impact of the lockdown, I'm afraid to say. Thank you councillor Hill and councillor Fumins.
Can we just clarify that the lights are going on on the 19th, even though we won't be encouraging?
Yeah, so we will make the, obviously the road was closed last weekend, I believe, on the Sunday, to make the arrangements of getting them up. They're coming to do a final checkover just before, just before the 19th and then we will be switching them on. It's a shame because I'd actually arranged with, with Shropshire Council to have those, have late night shopping and have the car park free for that night and a couple of other nights in those Thursdays for late night shopping. And the traders had brilliantly said yes and were all keen and ready to go and then, of course, they will now be closed. So I presume the offer of the free parking is gone, but we will get them switched on and at least they will be on as a light and reminder of people that Christmas is still happening. So yes, we fully intend to switch the Christmas lights on on the 19th. Councillor?
Yeah, just further from that, could I just ask for, you know, whether some of the traders on the council could try and get a bit of a view on whether, whether the shops are going to be open late throughout December, subject to Covid restrictions. We've been assured by Prime Minister that it's going to be relaxed and going into tears from the 2nd of December onwards. We need to be prepared for that, but are the traders prepared to take advantage of that short window that they might have to, in order to recoup the losses that they've sustained during this lockdown?
Councillor Natalie Park, do you have any comments on that?
I'd like to think a lot of the traders are quite business savvy and they would take the opportunity to offer trade-in, to get as much trade as they can, speaking to a few of them today. It is devastating again to see the shops dark and lights off and it's not nice, so I'd hope that they would. I can put communications in, I think there's members of the public here, also traders, and I'm sure they'd agree that they'd want to push as much just on social media they are at the minute, but in December when this lockdown is hopefully over, they will push just as hard in December. And if that means late nights, then absolutely I'd welcome it as well, but, you know, with my shop, I'm going to do what I can. But I'll, I'll have a chat and drop it in that, the group that we've got and.
Excellent, yes. Yes, and please, I'll see, if that does happen, then it does look like an option. Please let me know and I will see if I can speak to Shropshire Council again and get some free parking, but we can always ask the question. Anything else for the town clerk at all? If not, then I'll take it that we can, oh, sorry, the town clerk would like to speak.
I was just going to say that we had all returned to the office after the relaxation of the restrictions in August, but now with the latest guidelines, we are, will be working a rotor system so that there will be a member of staff in the office every day, but there will be one of us at a time, just so that you're aware of that. And we are discouraging visitors to the office and that's absolutely essential. We can be contacted by telephone and by email.
Yes, I'd like to echo that the office is certainly closed to councillors and members of the public in that regard. So thank you very much. We've received the report, are happy to move on to item nine, reinvigoration of Much Wenlok Town Centre. Excellent. So I've just got a quick report on what has been happening with the group. As you're all aware, the wording for the signage has been agreed and the signs are essentially, for anyone who doesn't know, they're there to catch people's eyes, they're driving through and we hope that it will draw people in who have planned to visit but have seen the signage and thought, oh, that sounds good, or, or that they're passing through and then might call in again. So that signage has been agreed and, sorry, the wording has been agreed and the order has been placed. The all free online business coaching sessions have been held with the company Good to Great with a good attendance and from the one I attended, I thought it was excellent and we've received some really positive feedback from a range of traders and community groups. So we're looking to, it would have been really good to have seen the impact of that, but that has been difficult with a lockdown. And finally, the filming for the clips is complete and now we're at an editing stage. My thanks to Mike Rust and Paul Hutchinson for their hard work in creating and editing those videos. We obviously talked about the impacts before, but broadening appeal, attracting a greater number, in particular, we'd like to see the videos help pull people in for special visits from all over the town, sorry, all over the county and country when it's safe to do so. Do you have any questions, can I take any questions on the reinvigoration of Much Wenlok Town Centre Covid Fund meeting? No? In that case, we'll move on to item 10, highways, to note a report on the initial town centre highway discussions. With the difficulties we had with the Rule of Six, the meetings haven't properly taken place, but they will be taken place via Zoom. Councillor Fumins, you had a bit of a pre-meeting on this and I just was keen to hear what was discussed, I know that it was touched on by Mr Hanafin in his, in his public session.
Yeah, I think, first of all, I want to assure Arthur that it isn't just a, you know, kicking the ball down the, down the road, it isn't, it also, you know, as Paul pointed out, it isn't within the remit of the town council, which is why it's quite appropriate that it is a multi, multifaceted group, so that it isn't just council, it also brings in people who are A, affected, or B, have knowledge and experience of traffic management issues. The first thing though is, is to actually, you know, use it as a means of gathering information and gathering opinion. Also, we can look at perhaps, with a bit of, you know, hopefully be able to learn from what's happened elsewhere. There are other, other places where people have found solutions, sometimes as we've heard before, by some quite small tweaks. So, you know, because what was really clear at the last month's meeting was that it's this potential for dividing the town incredibly over whether you shut one street or shut another one, because of the impact it's going to have somewhere else in the town. It's, you're just transplanting the problem somewhere else. So, you know, we need to tread very, very carefully, but it is, it is very much a case of getting opinions together and, but also learning from what's been, what is going on elsewhere, dialogue with Shropshire Council in order to find out what, what are there, well, actually try and get them to buy into this. It, you know, to be perfectly honest, if you're not in Shrewsbury or as a street, you know, they don't seem to want to know, but we do need to be, we do need to start to, not pile pressure on, but educate some of the decision formers within the highways department.
Yeah, absolutely, I think I'm echoing that, I think it's, it's important because what you do here will have an effect on other parts of the town and the difficulty I have almost felt slightly under siege by different people with different views. I've had a few people email me saying, look at this, have you seen this, he's coming down there and actually with the forager, I was sent the photo and emailed it to people. But at the same time, there's residents from other parts of town who are very nervous about this situation and the effect it would have, particularly Queen Street, but also Back Lane and places like that for, for their people who drive, they've spoken to me and said that this would be a real problem for me and find it very difficult. So it's important to find a one-town solution on this and we will keep looking at it, we will gather the evidence and we will, we will work, work on it. Shropshire Council obviously aware of the situation and we'll, we'll look, we'll look to work with them as well. Anything, anything, any other councillors would like to say on this? Councillor Jenkins?
Yes, I'm sorry to be so repetitious. I banged on for some years about the traffic problems cannot be solved by signage. You can only make people stop doing what they do by making it impossible. I've previously mentioned bollards on the town square being put on the outside of the, the square itself, on the pavement edge to stop parking. That also would help along Shinton Street, so physically cars could not mount the pavement. You won't do anything with a sign saying, you know, slow down or road narrows, because people take no notice of them. So I just wonder if those comments of mine could be recorded, please. Bollards, pavement bollards, wide enough to allow people to come past. I think after three or four years banging on, the, the Shropshire Uniture Authority have finally replaced the bollard at the corner of the Guildhall, long overdue, but the same would work throughout the parts of the town. If that makes sense, thank you.
And as, of course, you're a member of the group looking at that, so please in those meetings do bring those suggestions forward and we're certainly, they will be heard. Any comments or any part of that would note the report from councillor Fumins? So, if not, I'll propose that we note that report. A seconded? A seconded? Excellent. All those in favour? Thank you very much. Item 10, High Streets, sorry, item 11, 10 High Streets to note a report on High Street from the working group. Councillor White?
Yeah, just a quick update. We have had some clarification from Barclays, from our liaison man there. It turns out that the electricity powering the cash machine is part of the building's electricity supply, which we clearly pay and it's been estimated at around fifty to a hundred pounds a year possibly to, for running of the cash machine. We're still waiting for clarification about the security of the meter box on the outside of the building where the meter is red before we secure it and put a padlock on it. So as a member, the public couldn't just fiddle with it. And also about the light just inside the door, but I'm sure that will come in due time. The next step really is to assess the community feedback, which obviously the deadline day has been and gone. It turned out in the end that we put far more publicity out on social media and really pushed it in the last week. And we have had quite a lot of replies now, both on social media, email, letters. So the next job is to go through those. And then, excuse me. And then what we need to do then is to look at some of the ideas that Vince suggested and then sort of make an assessment of the feasibility. So it isn't, it isn't all going to happen overnight. We will be having a meeting at some point to go through those. Then next we need to get the electricians and the decoration done. Incidentally, on the last inspection, when I lifted up the carpet tiles, there's a gorgeous wooden floor underneath, which will help to benefit the building at a later date. And then we're going to make some more inquiries with Shropshire Council about how we're going to be charged for council tax if we change the use of the building from a business premises to a council run community hub, for example. So I propose that I'll continue to work with the group and report back at the next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you very much, councillor White. So interesting to hear about the floor. I've never noticed that in there at all, but.
Yeah, there's even a hatch which clearly must go to a cellar, which is in the wooden floor, but I couldn't get it up. But I'm sure at some late stage we will do.
Excellent. And then so there'll be a meeting hopefully called soon to have that because I'm really pleased about the response. I'm sure all councillors are. We didn't have many the last meeting, but now we do, which is excellent. We'll look forward to going through this. And just to confirm, if it goes to a community use, we will still have to pay some sort of business rate on the council tax.
Well, that's what we're seeking clarification on really, because we're not quite sure what the position will be. So wheels are in motion to get some clarification on that. At the moment, the business rates, the council tax is six and a half thousand, I think it is a year, which obviously we could do without paying, especially if it's going to be a community building. So yeah, we'll seek some clarification, then we'll report back.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I propose that we note the report and thank councillor White for it. Can I have a second? Excellent. All those in favour? Motion carried. Thank you very much, councillor White. Item 12, BT consultation on removal of payphone in the square. Item A to note that the BT is consulting on the removal of 56 payphones in the county, including the payphone in the square Much One Lock. And item B to decide whether to request the retention of the payphone or agree to its removal. It was quite interesting this. I was actually very surprised to see that the average phone call count from that phone box in the square is a nineteen, nineteen average monthly phone calls are made from that telephone box in the square compared to recently the Homer one, which didn't have one for about two years. So councillors, obviously you've got the supporting documents, we've had a look through. What are your thoughts about this? We'd all be keen to know. Councillor Whitman?
Yeah, well, I think if you've had nineteen a week, a month, you said.
Yes, on the supporting document, it mentions that there are an average of nineteen monthly calls made from that.
So, so somebody's making use of it. I know most people use mobiles and that sort of thing. So presumably it doesn't cost us anything to ask for it to stay there. So I think we should ask for it to stay there if it's been used by some people. The other thing, of course, it's pretty good in an emergency, I presume.
Absolutely. Of course, this, we live in, we have a town where people from other areas and other places visit and I've seen cases in the past, if they, people who visit, if they're elderly or something may not have access to a mobile or something. And at that point, it could be useful in emergencies. And in that regard, if it's been used nineteen times a month, I think unless anyone's got any difficult views, different views, I can't really see us advocating for its removal when it's been used that much. Councillor Fumins?
I was just gonna, I just can't think where there's another one in the town. I think that's the last one, isn't it?
Absolutely. Unless I mistake, I believe it is too.
Yeah, for that, for that reason and the reasonably in it, it is, you know, you've got to say what would happen if the mobile phone signal went down. It would be the only emergency phone, wouldn't it? So I think, I think we've got a, should make a fairly strong case for quite a number of arguments why it should remain.
I completely agree. Councillor Walters, your views please?
I even extended it a bit further and say not just retain that phone box that we've got there. But I noticed in the narrative that I was reading, they're getting rid of a lot of these traditional phone boxes around the county. And given that we get a lot of tourists coming into the town, look rather quaint if we were to have a traditional phone box put in there. So all in favour of retaining it, given the usage and maybe considering whether we couldn't get a traditional phone box put in.
That's interesting. Funny enough, I met with the residents of Homer there, Home and Wigwick Community Group and had a good chat with them. It was very interesting that they had actually requested a traditional red phone box. Theirs is the BT version that we have. And BT said would have put one in, but it was quite expensive, but it might be something that we could look at. But in regards to keeping it there, I think looking for a proposal to do so for councillor would like to make one. Councillor, why are you going to make a proposal?
Yeah, I propose that we, yeah, fight to keep it definitely with that amount of use. It's right in the centre of the town. It's perfect. Yeah. And as councillor Walter said, if we could ever change it to a lovely traditional red one, that would be fantastic. So I propose that we keep it.
Okay, my proposal is to request to keep, to request the retention of the phone box. It's proposed. Can I have a second please? Thank you. All those in favour? Motion carried. Excellent. Item 13, to consider a response to the following consultation and any more received. Item A, Shropshire Council's draft community and rural strategy 2020, which is open now. So Shropshire Council is inviting feedback on a draft strategy designed to affect the rural nature of the county and to set out priorities for the future. They've been working with a partner, a group of partner organisations, elected councillors, town and parish councils, and also some community sector organisations and the Shropshire Business Board. The consultations open for eight weeks and they're asking for some feedback. It is quite a big document. It takes some, it does take some reading, but I think given its importance of nature, I was wondering if we potentially pass it to either an existing working group or if a team of councillors or something could look at rearranging some feedback to the group because it does look important. Councillors, your views please?
Yeah. Yes, we definitely. We must reply. We must state our feelings, but I think we have to consider this very carefully because I read part of it. Yes, it's not very easy reading.
No, it's not. I was, I was thinking because of that and its nature, it might be worth a few potential councillors volunteering to look through it or it could quite clearly take up a whole meeting in itself for all the councillors to go through it, but please do, councillors, take the time to read it and pass your views on if we do go down that route. Thank you, councillor Hollyoke. Any other comments, councillors, on this or anything they'd like to add?
Well, we don't have to have the reply until our next meeting, do we?
Well, that's true. You're absolutely right.
That's what I'm thinking.
I see. So the consultations obviously closes on the sixth of December and our next meeting is on Thursday, the third. So would your proposal be to, what would you be proposing councillor Hollyoke? Sorry.
I propose that we can scissor it and come back to it on the next town council meeting.
Excellent. I think due to its heavy nature, I think that would be a good idea. So councillor, town clerk?
Right. Could I just ask how that will happen? Because unless something is drafted, I fear that we may sit here in a month and not have anything concrete.
Councillor Fumins, your views please?
Yeah, and just in the forward to this, from Gwllan Butler, there is a, there are a list of bullet points there. And I think that is, rather than look at the whole thing, which is quite daunting, if everybody focused on that list of eight bullet points, I think that, you know, it's something we can perhaps encourage people on a wider basis to engage with. That these are the headings that they're looking at. And it's, if you look at the whole thing, you just can't take it in. But just those eight bullet points does simplify things and I think it gives people an opportunity to pick up on something that they would like to champion.
Yes. So your, so your idea would be to, for all councillors to look heavily at the forward and then at the next meeting, give their views then. Rather than have a group of councillors, volunteers go off and.
We already, we already have, we already have a views and policies for quite a number of these. And yeah, some of these concerns are, excuse me, fireworks with your dog. But we can already, we can already extrapolate from previous discussions within council.
Yes. Okay. In that regard, I've got a proposal. Oh, sorry, councillor Hill, your views?
Yeah, can I just check with town clerk? Trudy, wasn't, has this arisen out of, remember we went for a day to Shire Hall? And it seems to me, just looking at it, this seems to have arisen because Gwllan Butler was at attendance at that day. Do you remember when we were in groups and it was all about rural strategy? I'm just wondering if we, if we got any, any notes left from that meeting. I know I haven't, but can you remember when we went, we all had a big flip chart, we all had pieces of paper and then we moved around. I think this possibly arose out of that, that day.
Yeah, it looks as if it could be connected because it does say they've been having conversations, doesn't it? So it could be connected to that. I recall going because we all had to, the facilitators stayed at the table while the majority of people moved around.
Yes, it was hilarious. I think that's what this has risen out of, you know, that it's as a result of what went on. But I don't know whether we've got anything, you know, that we had at that time, I've no idea. I didn't keep anything.
I mean, it was all more about feeding in views, wasn't it? I'm not sure that there was anything that we did that would really help in a response from the council because obviously that was, that was to help with formulating this whole strategy rather than then commenting on what they've got as an end product.
It's just a thought. I think that's where it's come from anyway.
Excellent. So that's, that's good to know that we have already been consulted and worked on this document beforehand. So I've got a proposal from councillor Hollyoke to, for everybody to go ahead and focus on the forward and then bring their views back to next meeting. And if everyone's happy with that, I'd be looking for a second on that if possible. Councillor White's seconded. All those in favour? Excellent. Motion carried. So we will look at the draft community and rural strategy in our next meeting, which does only give three days. So please do read the forward and work. And hopefully we can draft something quickly. Item 13B, Shropshire Council's vibrant cultural strategy from 2021 to 2031, a 10-year strategy is now open and available and we have been sent the, the forward and the options to look at the different appendices again. This is a pretty weighty document and I think that's shown by the fact that the consultation runs for three months, but as it focuses on Shropshire's cultural strategy for the next 10 years, again, it's a very important document in that regard. Councillors, your views on how we'd like to respond to this? Because as you know, it's important, particularly when it talks about, there's a focus on keeping people happy and healthy, helping people who are lonely connect with others, embracing the skills and experience of the older generation and somewhat, I could argue more importantly, attracting and keeping young people in the county. So obviously really important views. It does, it is impact very similar to the previous one, but much more focused on culture. Your views please, councillors?
Well, I think again, we need to read it. We've got a long, it's open until the fifth of January. A bit more reading during lockdown, I suggest. I think try and read it again before, before December's meeting. I haven't had a chance to look at that. A bit more weighty reading, I suggest, with our thoughts at the next meeting. Although the next two meetings go to that.
No, I think that, I think that's good. If we, if I understand that you're proposing to put it on the next agenda and after giving councillors more time to read it. I had a bit of a stab at it, but it's again, it's weighty and it's probably just prompts some discussion, particularly when it talks about attracting and keeping young people in the county. Whether exactly what they're proposing and how it would work in practice is, it would be quite interesting to discuss as well. So in that regard, I've got a proposal to, again, put it on next month's agenda and look at it then. Can I have a second for that proposal please? Excellent. All those in favour? Motion carried. Item 14, sorry, councillor Whitman, would you like to?
I declared an interest chairman, so I'm going to leave the room and put the kettle on. I'm not sure how you're going to call me back.
Okay, town clerk?
Shall I put councillor Whitman into the waiting room?
Yeah, you can do.
Try. Put him waiting room. Yes, he's gone. There we are.
Excellent. So item 14, Shropshire County Pension Fund, to consider whether Much One Lock Town Council wishes to support the motion passed by Shropshire Council on the 16th of July 2020 to divert the, divest the Shropshire Council Pension Fund from fossil fuels within the next three years because as you've seen, they, a lot of the pension fund and things has been within invested in fossil fuels and that is now at odds with their climate change crisis, which they called, I think, last year or two years ago. And in that regard, we'll obviously look at if we would like to support that motion. Councillors, your views please? Councillor Hollyoke?
Yes, I think we should support it for all the reasons you've quoted. They should not be in that job now, you know, they should. You know, they should be getting something else to invest in. I don't know what, not at the moment.
Absolutely. I, I do agree. I think it's, they've obviously put that forward themselves, but they're asking for town councils and parish councils to support it. Personally, I'm more in favour of it, that we are in a climate emergency. Councillor Fyman?
Yeah, whilst we can support the sentiments behind it, I think we do need to stress that any sort of decision should be made on the best, the best outcome for the investment. And we're already, we're already seeing Shropshire Council cock up investments with the, the town centre shopping centres. They've, they've, they've actually gone down by to about a third of the value they paid for them.
Absolutely.
Few years ago, so there's absolute disaster. I think we all saw it coming. I'm afraid us, possibly if they're just going to just go and dump fossil fuel investments overnight, just for a bit of a political stunt, which I think it possibly is in this case, there we might find us, the Shropshire Council has a huge black hole in its, in its pension fund. So I think it should be very, done very, very carefully to ensure that, that it is not stripped of assets in which, which is in the way that they've done before.
Hmm. I think that's, that's a fair comment. It's, with that, the shopping centres was a, was a shame, was a real shame. Councillor Hill, your views please?
Well, I agree with councillor Hollyoke. I think it, having then declared a climate emergency, it's, it just doesn't fit with that. I think they've got to do something else. I do agree with councillor Thiemans, but we're simply being asked whether we support the motion and I personally think we should.
Thank you. Councillor Walters?
Yeah, I'm very much in support of divesting from such assets. It suggests that it's going to be done over three years. Mark Carney suggests that we want to be rid of assets that are going to be stranded assets. I'd have actually sort of wanted something else put in there about investing in more sound ecological companies that are going to be investing in the future, not the past. And that's as much as I would say, very much in support of divestment over a reasonable period of time.
Yeah, excellent. I think that's, I think we've, unless anyone's got anything else to say, I think we're all in agreement and I'd be looking for a proposal.
Yeah.
Councillor Hollyoke, what, are you proposing that we?
Propose we, we support this fully and ask for it to be implemented as soon as possible.
Excellent. I think that's, that's fair. Can I have a second please? Councillor White, all those in favour? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Item 15, WHAT Free Words, to consider whether to promote the use of the WHAT Free Words scheme for identifying a person in an emergency. For those who aren't aware, WHAT Free Words is actually something I've had on my phone for a few years now. It's, I'd heard about it in a BBC News article where someone was hiking and they had injured themselves. And the benefit of WHAT Free Words is, is that everywhere in the world is mapped into three meter squares by using three different words. So the reason why it's so powerful is that if you can be somewhere without data or without a phone signal, you can use this app to find, to, to, to know where you are and the emergency services will ask you where your WHAT Free Words thing is. So for example, if it's, may not be so useful in, in a town like Much One Lock, but if you were, but for people who, who do more adventure sports and things like, than hiking and things, it is very useful if you've broken your leg and you can contact the emergency services and tell them exactly where you are. So in that regard, that, that's what it is. Um, we were obviously, I'm not suggesting that we do a big promotion of it, but it is something that they would like us to look at promoting. It's something that's come from Shropshire and from the emergency services and asking town and parish councils to promote its usage. Councillors, your views please? Councillor Jenkins? Councillor Jenkins, you're muted. Councillor Fyman, shall we come to you first and?
Yeah.
When he's unmuted.
I just, I just think this is a really cheap and effective way of, of putting, giving people the information of exactly where they are. We've got notice boards all around the town, we've got visitor boards. We, we, you can think about strategic places on the Gaskell field. And, yeah, just, just have some little laminated or perhaps even a bit smarter, just little WHAT Free Words instructions of, in various sites around the town. I think it's a very cost-effective way of doing it.
Absolutely. If you look at the local people or local authorities that use it, West Mercia Police Bureau have used it and have used it when they've, if there's been burglary, robberies and things like that, they've asked for people to use the app to say exactly where they are because some places in more rural parts of our parish may be difficult to find the numbers. And secondly, Shropshire Fire and Rescue Service also use it. So there's two key local authorities that use it. And I think in that regard, but not to mention that Much One Lock is a rapid response in flooding. It could be advertised and promoted cheaply. Those authorities have asked us to do it unless anyone's got any objections or any comments. I pretty think this is a pretty, in a fair cheap way of promoting something that could be quite important. Councillor Jenkins?
Am I back now?
Yes, you, you're not muted, are you?
I would wholeheartedly agree with this. Half of the deliveries I get to my little place in Friary Court find people knocking on the door of the pottery. I think there will be a little bit more explanation required for people over the age of 12 like me, but no wonderful idea, please.
Excellent. Thank you very much. In that regard, I propose that we do promote the use of WHAT Free Words across the town councils' notice boards and other appropriate places.
Yeah.
Seconded. All those in favour? Motion carried. Item 16A, to receive and note the following items. Item A, Salk Information Bulletin and Information. Item B, Shropshire Council Press Releases. C, Rural Bulletins. And D, Shropshire Hills Area of Natural Beauty Partnerships Annual Review. Can I have any comments on those? If not, I'd like a proposal to note them.
Yeah.
So it's proposed that we note these. Can I have a second? Thank you. All those in favour? Motion carried. Item 17, Agenda Items for the Next Town Council Meeting. Members are invited to suggest items for inclusion on the agenda for the next meeting. Councillors, any items that we'd like to put on the agenda?
We've got the two that we've already deferred from this meeting, so there's two to start with.
Absolutely. We've, we've got them proposed to go on there. I think we'll, the Highways Group will have met then, so that will, that can go back on there. If not, obviously, please councillors, you write into the town clerk within the appropriate time and can discuss those items then. And then in that regard, I'll move on to item 18, Date of Next Meeting. So the next meeting will take place on the third of December 2020. Can I have that as noted please? All those in favour? Item noted. And now we do have an addendum to the contract, sorry, addendum to the agenda, which is in, has to be considered in private session. So in that regard, members of the public, I'd ask you to leave now, please. Thank you very much. And then I propose that we go into private session. All those in favour? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Brilliant, okay. Right. Trudy, sorry, town clerk, do we still record these items now? Just thinking about. Is it, because obviously if we put this, if we have this still recorded, then it would be difficult to have to cut it off to go on to YouTube.
So I will, I will stop the recording then.
Thank you.